Good to go, sir.
Good to go.
We're just to go. We will call the Grant County Board of Commissioners to order Monday, August 1st. Happy August 1st, everyone. Invite you to stand. Mr. Wright is going to lead us in prayer. Mr. Burton is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Our Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for doing the people's work. We just ask for your wisdom and guidance on the decisions we make today that they can be the best they can for the community. Lord, we thank you for people willing to serve on all the different boards that we have, and we'll just give this whole day up to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. We meet through our preliminary work. We have approval of current claims, no minutes to review, and earlier payroll. So with regard to preapprovals, from July the 25th, there was a preapproval for invoice edit reports to general in the amount of $139,508.11. Other invoice edit report batch, $95,926.59. And the highway batch, $56,673.57 for a grand total of $292,108.27. So that would be our preapprovals of invoice edit reports would need a motion to ratify that preapproval. I so move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright, to ratify the preapproval. Second, Mr. Burton, any other discussion on those claims? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Just hang on. Make sure we... There we go. All right. As well, we have general claims for today. Invoice edit reports under general batch would be $139,345.21. Other batch, $221,996.30. Highway batch, $151,701.68 for grand total of $513,431.19. These are our invoice edit reports for today, and we would need a motion to approve the payment. So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright. Second, Mr. Burton. Any questions on those invoice edit reports? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried. And we have a preapproval from payroll number 15 that was formally approved on July 19, and gross amount paid out was $519,697.11. That was dispersed on July the 22nd. With that preapproval, we would need a motion to ratify payroll number 15. So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wright. Second, Mr. Burton. Any questions on that? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried. And we should have those minutes that were presented to us by next meeting. I think that's the 15th. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Communication board updates, elected officials. We'll start with our auditor and work around the room.
I don't believe I anything add today, so we can pass to the next.
All right. Next elected official in my purview. Mr. Rorback, anything from the council?
No, sir. Thank you.
Very good. Other elected officials in the room? All right. Boards, special committees. You did meet on our behalf last month with the East Central Indiana Sallie Way's district. I had to think of it.
I did. They did not have a forum.
Okay.
So there wasn't a lot of discussion or a lot of decisions made there.
Okay. As a general rule, two commissioners out of each county are usually there, but I was in training that week, and I appreciate you at least being able to make contact with me. Other boards or special committees?
I did attend a retreat for the Economic Growth Council, and very informative, about a four-hour meeting. And how times have changed since I was on the city council, where we were really trying to bring any job we can at the time. And today, the focus is not necessarily on jobs. It's about creating a quality of life that people want to move here. And so kind of a 180 for me, being elected official, to know what I was doing before and really our charge now, of what we need to really focus on. So more to come on that. I think the Growth Council is doing a great job, and I think they're going to get lined up a little bit more with possibly, how can we attract people, not necessarily jobs itself? So because if we created more jobs, we'd just rob from the people who's already got a job. And those locations, which would drive everything up and cost and things. So it was a good meeting. Appreciate charity, the economic development director hosting that, and I think more to come on that.
Good. We can handle it under this. It is a communique from an elected official. We had the monthly report of the Circuit Clerk of Circuit Court, and we need to receive her report, month ending June 30th of 2022. That's just her recap, all the statistics and information that goes on monthly, and we receive that, so.
Motion to receive.
Second. Motion, Mr. Burton. Second, Mr. Wright. Do we have any questions, comments on that? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried. And as a general rule, we initial one copy and keep it. So I'm going to ask you to... We'll have to initial that for us. See, I'm putting off IT as long as I can because I know he wants to talk money.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Go right ahead, Marcus.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. So I just got two items today. So one of them is a follow-up from when I was here last time for the two-factor authentication. Justin, he reached out to Greg Lane, our insurance guy, and he basically gave him our quote, and he looked at it, and he wasn't 100% sure, so he sent it to his IT team, and they reviewed it, and they believe it will do everything we want. His biggest concern was just the cost of it. So I pulled up the two other quotes I got. One of them was Cisco Duo, and it was quoted at $14,080. And Microsoft, they also offer two-factor as well. So it would basically go on top of our monthly email bill and stuff like that that we do. And to upgrade that plan, it would be an additional $30,000 or $30,000 to get that on there. And with Okta, it was in the middle at around $19,000. And the nice thing with Okta is it's a locked-in, three-year plan. And it's basically locked in, you know, locked us in where we'd be paying $19,000 each year for the next three years. And that also included training, whereas with the other two quotes, that did not include training, and it wasn't offered. So I guess the big question is, is, you know, how do we want to perceive? Obviously, you know, it's something I would like to get put in before the end of the year, so that way next year in January, when they go to review our setup and stuff again, like how they did this year, it'd already be in place. So I mean, that's... That was kind of my thoughts on it. But I don't currently have enough in my contractual services to put this on there, so we'd have to go for an additional appropriation if we decide to do so sometime in...
So that would be your recommendation to go with this 15... 25 cents for the next three years?
Yes.
Do not have the budget to cover that, so we would have to move this forward. We would do this and then the council on appropriation. I guess the big question is, have you convinced the Board of Commissioners that we need to move forward on this?
I would like to think so, but I mean, that's... I'd be in view, gentlemen.
So what kind of questions do we need to have answered that would say, we believe this is a necessity?
Well, I mean, the biggest thing is it's just for the cybersecurity insurance. Basically, they're wanting two-factor on everything. So I know this year, they basically said, hey, you know, either we're going to charge you extra, or we're not going to cover you at all if you don't turn two-factor on for your emails. So we worked with Justin and Greg, and we got that done this year. So I just don't want us to be put in a predicament where, you know, they won't cover us like next year. Now, obviously, I mean, it could be fine. They might... That might be okay for us for now, but, you know, the two-factor and stuff, it's additional security, and it'll help us now. It just helps keep us covered, so.
I know we need to keep putting up walls between us and the hackers and the fishers and anybody else that's... In fact, I had just taken the know-before stuff.
Yep.
And I was on another email site for the International Chaplains, and a pop-up happened in my email saying, you need to change your password before the end of the day. And I go, oh, there's a red flag. And so I started checking via my phone with a couple other folks, and go, yeah, that's the same one that got me. It is. And so what you're doing in instructing our employees and helping them to see what the red flags are is saving us from ransomware and from, you know, other things. And I would have maybe clicked on that if I had not just taken my training.
Yeah. I mean, the biggest thing, I mean, you can do is knowledge, for sure. But this is just, you know, the two-factor is, you know, that's just to make sure, you know, when people sign in with their stuff, they are who they say they are. It just provides that extra validation.
It's a good layer of protection for us.
Correct. So I mean, and with this, it would go on everything, basically. So.
New guy, you're on the block.
Yeah.
Have we ever had a data breach?
I wouldn't call it necessarily a data breach. In 2016, we had a ransomware attack. We were very fortunate. It happened early in the morning, but it ran for two hours, and it hit like, it was probably, what, maybe nine, 10 servers?
Yeah.
Servers. And one of those was the, you know, the CAD system, too. So and it took me all day and all night.
Period.
Yeah. Yeah. So that was the last time that happened. When that happened, we basically revamped our, the county's IT security and went with a new firewall. We went with a new antivirus, all that good stuff. That was the last time we ever had like a attack like that, where it put people down. Since then, I mean, it's...
I think Madison County was the closest that actually got ransomware, and they had to pay a ransom to get their system back.
Yeah. They were calling me, asking me how we got, how we didn't have to pay. I told them, I said, well, you know, we just restored from our backups.
I just, I look at this, and I look at it as insurance money, just to make sure that we're protecting our goods as far as knowledge and the information that we have, plus the citizens. So I think it's money well spent. I hate to spend money on insurance when you don't ever need it.
Right.
But you also don't know when you're going to need it.
Right.
And so I, like I say, I look at this as an insurance payment, just to make sure we're doing what we need to do to keep our system there. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Marcus, I know you preferred this one, and you mentioned the other amounts, but I don't have this in front of me. Can you again repeat what the other quotes were?
Yeah. So the other one was CD from CDWG, and that was for Cisco's Duo multi-factor authentication. It was for the same quantity of users, and it was quoted at $14,080.
That's per year for three years as well?
Yes, but that price is not locked in for, you know, three years. So just with CDWG, they only quoted out per year.
One year. And you said something about that doesn't include training, too.
Yeah, it does not.
Well, how much is training, do you know?
They didn't offer it with their services.
Okay. And you had one other quote?
Yes. The other one was from Presidio, because they manage our office licensing and stuff. And basically, to get multi-factor through them, we would have to upgrade our, they call it Azure Active Directory Plan, and we'd have to upgrade that to a Plan 1. And basically, for the same amount of users, the 440, it was basically $30,043. Yeah, $30,043 annually.
That's for one year.
Annually. Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
And it is your recommendation for us to move forward with the Blackwood quote?
Yes. So I don't know if you gentlemen just want to grant me permission. I don't know if I should just go to the county council and then see if I can get that additional appropriation. I know I included a bump up in my contractual services for this specifically, but obviously that, if that was to get approved, it wouldn't kick in until next year in January.
So we still need the appropriation for this year to get the contract?
Right. Right. Exactly. Because, yep.
Do you have any money left in your contractual services or not?
I do, but it would wipe me out if I went through with it, so.
So we've got a couple options. If we believe that this is important, we can say, go request the appropriation, and then we can sign it if you get it, or we can say, we endorse this as is, and pending an approval of a additional appropriation, we move forward with it as soon as the council will give it. And that wouldn't be till next month at the earliest.
Yeah. Yeah. I actually will do, I'll be doing the agenda for next week's meeting tomorrow, but we haven't advertised for this, and it wouldn't be until the September meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
So we could do it either way, or not at all if you gentlemen don't want to. So on your contractual services, and again, I want to be frugal with people's monies. I know that's more of the county council responsibility and things, but I also know if you do have some money in there, we always kind of look and make sure we spend the money by the end of the year.
Right.
Can you take some of your money that you have now and put towards that? And then if you run short at the end of the year, you can come back to us and ask for those.
I could probably put some towards it. The big thing with us is we have our Microsoft, it's our monthly Microsoft 365 bill. So that's one of the biggest ones that comes out of there every month. So that's what that, the remainder of that is pretty much tied to. I do, I will have some left over, but I'd have to go in and check that amount. But yes, I would have some we could put towards it, for...
If you could come up with that number that might soften the blow a little bit to the county council that we're just asking for, a special appropriation that would only pick up your shortfall to that point, if that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely. I can double-check that and get those numbers, and I can include that in the additional appropriation letter, and I can have you CC'd in on it along with the council, so.
So I would put that in the form of a motion, that we accept the request with the understanding that dollars would be issued from their account of any dollars that they can appropriate towards this project, if that makes sense.
And requesting the additional appropriation?
From the county council.
As needed.
I'll second that.
All right. Just clarification on the first part of that motion. We're saying we're endorsing and moving that forward?
Yes.
Pending their approval.
Yeah. After hearing the question about other expenses and stuff, it sounds like this is the contract that we need to go with, especially with the training.
Right.
Because a program's only good if the people use it.
Right.
So that would be my motion.
Was that clear as mud for our recording secretary? You got that? How'd I do?
I get it.
All right. All right. The motion is to move forward with the Blackwood quote, utilizing as much of the contractual services as possible, and seeing the appropriation from the council as only as much as needed.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? We have a question over here?
Yeah, just make sure we're clear. The schedule shows a payment due date of July 31, so they would be flexible in allowing this.
Yes.
Wouldn't be charged and be getting the year's fee, so to speak, until it's actually approved and so.
Right. It has to be approved and signed.
Want to make sure that we weren't held to this date.
No. No.
All right. And that is pending council approval for a special appropriation.
Pending council approval. Okay.
I think bottom line, we're already doing what we need to do as far as the cybersecurity coverage is concerned. The one company that is covering us was the only one willing to. We were dropped from three or four others, I believe. So this is just an added measure of safety, you know, for our protection.
Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is carried.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item is courthouse cameras. Judge Todd and the head of the courthouse security team reached out to me a couple months ago, and they were basically wanting some cameras for the exterior of the courthouse. And they were also wanting a, another camera facing down the alley where the county employees walk over that way from their parking lot. We've been getting the Verkata cameras. We've been having a lot of luck with those. So basically, the plan was to get, they're called a fisheye cameras. So that way, that covers 180-degree view, so that way, that'll give the guard up front complete coverage of the building of the courthouse. And with the other camera, it was a 4K camera, so that way, they would be able to see down that alleyway and, you know, get a good look and with a nice resolution. So for all those cameras and maintenance and support and all that stuff, the grand total for that from CDWG was $9,988.42. So I just wanted to get your gentlemen's thoughts on that. I could put some money towards it. I would already have to look into getting data lines ran and things like that, because some of these, we don't have no connections on the sides of those buildings for these cameras. So that'll be something I'll have to figure out. I talked with them. I'd see about, you know, talking with you guys to see what we could do about getting these cameras in. So that way, that would give the guards, because get them a better view of what's going on outside the building, because they say they are, you know, they have issues, you know, being able to see from the outside.
If I may, I believe there are no, currently, there are no cameras outside the courthouse that the security officers ask for us to can view.
Got questions running through my mind, but do you have any thoughts, questions?
Well, I mean, I think it's imperative that we make sure we're taking care of people in the courthouse as well as those visiting the courthouse. And as we all seen over the weekend, anything can happen anywhere.
Right.
And so if this would help beef up the security around the courthouse, which, you know, a lot of people come into the courthouse a little upset every now and then, and it would just give us a little bit more of a line of defense and give us a little bit more time to react.
Right.
So that's my thoughts.
I concur with those thoughts.
Are we talking about mounted to the building itself? Are we talking about holes away from the building?
So initially, the way I envisioned it was to mount the four cameras to the, on the exterior of the building, and then just have like maybe a pole for the one, like shooting down the alleyway. I mean, that's the way I envisioned it. But I mean, obviously, none of that is set in stone. This quote does include like the mounting brackets and the caps, so we can mount them off of the building. So I mean, that, this doesn't include like the pole and stuff like that.
So is there any recording devices on these?
Well, the cameras, they have onboard storage, and they also save to the cloud. So with a lot of camera systems, like the one in the jail, they obviously have like a bunch of servers and storage. But well, with these, you don't have any of that. You just plug them in, and that's it.
And this ties in with the existing?
Like, well, it ties in with our existing Verkata system. And like I said, I know Kevin, Central Dispatch, we got those same cameras, although we, you don't have any fisheye.
No.
But we use them out there, and we have a couple of them out along the exterior of the annex and the sheriff's department, and they've worked really good.
Are these driven by Wi-Fi or cable?
Cable.
And they get their power through the ethernet cable, so it's just one data line that is run?
Yeah. Their POE is what they call them.
You know, POE?
No. PPE, I know. My, I know this sounds silly, but my biggest concern is David doesn't want to put any type of structural stress on his bridges, and I need to protect that 140-year-old building as much as possible, so my first inclination is not to put it on the exterior of the building by itself. Hopefully, there's another way that we can anchor those to...
Yeah. I mean, that was just my first initial thought, was to put it on the side of the building. But I mean, if we need to put, you know, poles up or something like that, I mean, I wouldn't see that being a problem, I wouldn't think.
No, I don't think so either. I mean, we could also see if we could work with some of our engineering firms in town and see if we could get some, something that would maybe mount to the roof or some other part of the structure up on top and then extend over.
Yeah.
It's true, we could do that.
I guess the other question I've got is we're just actually looking at one corridor. We actually have three other corridors that people travel up and down what would be considered an alleyway. And I know that there are some employees that go that south corridor to parking, but at the same time, we have parking to the west, we have parking to the east, we have others to the north, and so...
Yeah.
I know there's probably a specific incident that said, we definitely need to watch the south corridor, but if we're going to be watching, why aren't we watching the others as well? others as well?
Yeah. I mean, this is just, um, Judge Todd and Kurt McCollum. Uh, those were the two gentlemen I spoke to and, uh, that's what they were, uh, wanting covered. Uh, they didn't mention anything about the other corridors. So, um, yeah, I didn't have that included in the pricing on that. So I, I don't know. Maybe we need to have like a meeting with, uh, them and, uh, maybe a couple of the commissioners and just to figure out how we want to tackle it.
We do have a, a camera on, on our parking, so to speak, or at least the back door.
We, we have a camera on my lot, yes. And we have a camera that faces my back door. So yes.
Yeah.
But the area between the building and, and the alley is unprotected. I do know there are some kind of place you do park over there and walk through the courthouse.
So again, if we're not doing it for all of our employees, why would we just do it to the south? So I, I do think it needs a little bit more dialogue.
Yeah.
I'd be more than happy to be, um, on that committee.
There you go. You just got another committee.
There you go.
Yep.
Uh, just to kind of see what, uh.
Yeah, absolutely.
What it looks like and things. And, uh, that gives me, uh, knowing a little bit more about the buildings as well and stuff. It'd be a good committee thing for me as well.
Yeah.
So just let me know when you guys want to get together. People would be happy to.
Absolutely. I will, um, after the meeting's over, I will get back to my office. I'll send an email out to, uh, Judge and, uh, Kirk and, uh, anybody else who needs to be engaged in it. And, you know, we'll set up a time to get together. Yeah, we can iron out the details. So I mean, the biggest thing for this was just to open a dialogue up, uh, because this is something they've been wanting. I mean, they've been wanting to upgrade all the cameras in the courthouse because that camera system is very old. So I'm hoping to get that addressed with the grant. But obviously that's kind of, it's, it's kind of a, not a guarantee on it.
Just know how important, how important resolution is and things. I mean, especially if you're trying to zoom in and try to get certain things.
Right.
You know, whether it's a face recognition, whether it's, I mean, there's a lot of software out there that can do a lot of neat things, but in the same token, it's like, if you, if you don't have much to start out with, it's hard to.
Right.
Hard to get it. So I'd be more than happy to do it.
Thank you.
Okay. That, that sounds good. That's all I had, gentlemen. So thanks again for your time.
For IT today.
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Marcus, thank you for getting me all set up too.
Hey, that's great.
Everything's working so far.
Hey, good.
White in the room.
Yes, there we go.
Morning.
Good morning, sir.
First thing I'd like to do is open the bids for Bridge seven eighty-nine, uh, here on Tenth Street in Marion, Indiana. Uh, the first contractor to put a bid in is a milestone contractors out of Fort Wayne. Just to update you a little bit, this is a complete bridge replacement that we're working with the walkway program here in Marion to make a nice, safe, wide sidewalk for their, uh, trail project that are trying to get created downtown here in Marion. So, um, a little bit more than what the, some bridges are because of the sidewalk, et cetera. So the amount for their bid was six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. The next contractor was R.L. McCoy out of Columbia City. The amount of their project for the project, six hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifty cents. So I'd like to do is take this information back to the designer, which was Beam Long with the NEP, make sure they meet all the criteria, they've got the right numbers. And then, uh, at the next meeting, I'd like to present it to you gentlemen on which met all the criteria, if that's all right. So.
With your consent, gentlemen, we'll take that under advisement and wait for Mr. Wetz to report.
That'd be great. Um, any kind of pictures or anything, uh, that we could take a look at? Um, or maybe I just need to get with you and you show me what's going on.
Of the design?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can give you a set of plans of what the new bridge is going to look like and everything.
Have you guys seen that yet or not?
Uh, haven't just been in the dialogue, but in for the sidewalk, so.
And see what the game plan is and, and just see what it looks like.
Currently it has a small sidewalk on the north side of the bridge, but there's a gap in between them. But this will be all one complete project. So make it a lot safer. And just to kind of update you a little bit too is, uh, we was awarded, Mark, do you remember exactly how much it was for the community crossing grant? I think it was right around three hundred and fifty thousand. So I believe, but don't hold me to that. I think we estimated right around seven hundred thousand dollars.
Because we were thinking of fifty-fifty. It was fifty-fifty, wasn't it?
Right.
For this project.
Yeah. So the state will pay, basically, we already got the money for half of this project.
Okay.
So we'll pay the remaining balance. So just to let you know on that. Uh, some other things we've been busy doing, uh, we got County Road six hundred south paved from Upland City Limits to the East County Line. Uh, we paved Sellers Edition and, uh, County Road nine fifty east from State Road twenty-six into Matthews. Uh, the bridge on one thousand east, they've got the pilings drove, uh, and they should be starting on the bridge deck, uh, possibly this week on getting the structure ready to start pouring in. Uh, been working with the area plan on a building project in Van Buren, removing it. Uh, we should be done with it tomorrow as the latest before the popcorn festival.
Call it closed, but that's.
Yeah, like I say, and then, um, hopefully we'll get the sign up this week on Pennsylvania Street for Mr., I can't remember now what his name is, the radio.
Yep. It's Bill. It's not Bob, uh, William. It's.
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, Valerie.
Fowler.
Oh, yes. Okay.
So that'll hopefully be up this week. Still cleaning up some storm damage from last, the week ago, weekend storms. And, uh, what I also did too was I allowed, um, homeowners to bring their tree branches into the recycle center. Uh, I told them till the end of August if that's all right with you gentlemen. So, um, and we'll get the ones off the right of way cleaned up as much as we can. So.
From our inventory perspective, we took no, no, uh, damage to any of our inventory, as you're aware?
No. Um, other than Bobby signed, he took a nosedive.
Saw that.
Uh, we had about four or five rows we had to leave closed one night for the power company to get the power lines out of. But the next day we had them all back open. So other than that, I, maybe a few guard rail pieces got bent up, but, you know, nothing major road wise or anything or bridges. So that's all I have unless you gentlemen have anything.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I did talk to that contractor the day after our last meeting on the building and he said, uh, plan on probably September starting on the project. So getting that scheduled to get that built.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That gets us through our preliminaries, old business. I'm not noting anything here. Are you gentlemen aware of old business? All right. We move to new business. We've got another bid opening. Dwayne has been patiently waiting to see it, what, uh, what gets opened here. So if you want to step up to the podium and you can open or Justin can open, whatever you prefer.
I'll let the expert.
Just one.
Okay.
As far as I know.
And that's the little Tony.
Yes.
Tony.
Yeah. Do you have a knife?
That?
Is there a knife on me?
Tony, you want to come up? This is Tony. This is Tony from, who represents real pin care, which is almost a brokerage, um, so that I interpret his bid correctly. Tony, which page are you?
Just over here.
Okay. Uh, the original, this is the only bid that we've received. This is through Pin Care, um, and, uh, for the total of one million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. And again, that is, um, with the Ford rebate to be determined. So the amount will be less than that depending on what the rebate would be. But that is on four, uh, comparable ambulances that we now use.
This is for one ambulance?
Four.
Four.
See the price?
The price without the rebate is one million, forty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four
And should we embrace this particular, uh, bid? How soon? Where are we talking about receiving the, uh, the product?
Okay. Tony?
Time line. Yeah, you guys have all heard about the supply chain issues. That affects us as much as it does anybody. Ford, we're, we're under the, the guidelines of them. Um, you know, if awarded to us immediately, we will order the chassis. It could be six months. It could be a year. Those are the dates that we're seeing right now. It, it could pop earlier. It just really depends on, on what Ford ramps up and when they ramp up, when they get these microprocessor chips. So relatively speaking, worst case scenario, the chassis is a year and then we're probably four months after that to, to get the completed ambulance done. So sixteen months, give or take, but that could certainly fluctuate.
One of the other manufacturers that we talked to, and they chose not to bid, they said, well, over two years, that they wouldn't even, and then it would depend on what kind of chassis they came in. You put your name on a list, whenever they ordered chassis, if it was Dodge, if it was a GM, they would call and say, is that acceptable chassis? If so, they'd build your ambulance. They wouldn't even talk if, for anything less than two years. And then even decided then they didn't want to even take a bid.
And what, what do you think that our current, um, inventory, how, how are we holding up on, on its use?
We are. I mean, um, the problem is, well, really these, these would replace two thousand and elevens, ambulances. Well, actually would replace maybe one ninety-eight and, um, the other three, two thousand elevens, which the problem is, again, our usage increased dramatically over the last two years. If we had to wait another two years, obviously maintenance cost has gone up tremendously as well. That's what worries me, that you're, you're now talking another two years. So we're talking fourteen-year-old ambulances. That's what they would be replacing.
And I'm asking questions to help us in, in public discussion. Um, again, we currently do not have the finance for this. Is that correct?
No. In fact, um, Mr. McWirt, we will then submit the application to the bond bank and they, if I'm correct, they submit, they collect bids from eleven financial, financial institutions on available financing.
So you have talked with them, Dwayne?
Yes, we have the application, but we were waiting on the bid to make the final application.
Most likely, and I just talked to Dwayne earlier, I suggest that you contact them because I think probably from interest rate standpoint, they'll give you the best you can get. And they do survey multiple institutions for that. So it's a good choice to make is to go through them, I think.
Right.
And it does surprise us as an RFP.
Okay. What hoops do we have to jump through then, Jim?
Well, I think, once they give you the information as far as the bids that are available to you, you just, it'd be up to the, the council in this body to decide, hey, we're going to take this, wherever that quote is and run with it at that point.
So budget-wise, do you prepare in twenty-three or twenty-four?
Well, it sounds like you wouldn't be getting until twenty-four, it looks like. And I don't know how quickly.
Is that fair?
Uh, that's, yeah, it'd be close. I mean, it's going to be.
I, I don't know.
With us, nothing is due until the trucks are done and ready.
Right. I don't know. Did the bond bank talk to you about as far as timing? Do you, we're, we're going to accept a, you know, situation of this company? If we do that and it's going to be.
The bond bank said they're very much aware of the problems with the industry. What they do is adjust the payments accordingly, uh, particularly before development. For example, they normally do two payments per year, which is what the commissioners have chosen in the past. They said in that case, what they might do is make, depending upon the delivery date, one payment due like in twenty-three or a pre-type payment. Now, they do have options that if you want to start the payment before you get the product, but I don't think that's something.
I don't think we'd take that approach. I don't think.
Right. But in most cases, it begins within six months or the first initial payment is on delivery, as soon as it's delivered and you've accepted it. And then six months later, a second payment, which would put it right at, well, right at the end of twenty-three to begin, um, into twenty-four.
You looking to use a CCD fund for those payments? Is that what you're looking to do?
That's what we currently do with the lease.
Right.
That's, that's what we do.
That's what's been done in the past. That's fine. Uh, just as a thought, I, obviously two thousand twenty-three's budget has not been even reviewed at this point by the council. But in my quick look at it, you can't fund your current proposal for twenty-three's budget right now. We haven't talked yet, Justin, but right now you've got a deficit there. So something's going to be reduced to what you currently have in there now to make that pass.
In CCD?
In CCD. I don't recall the number, but it was a chunk. I mean, it was sizable. So there's got to be a reduction there, I think. So I'm not sure if any of that includes an ambulance payment or not in that twenty-three budget. I haven't looked at that detail.
I think so.
Yeah.
And does that wrap up? Well, we have, we have a current schedule now and I haven't got it in front of me. So I'm not sure what that ends.
I believe twenty-three wraps it up.
Okay. So we do need that in there. So my mind is you have to have something reduced. I'm not sure what it is at this point, but something will have to be. So my hope would be you wouldn't start those two payments till twenty-four. That'd be my hope based on that.
So if you allow me, I will go ahead and solicit with the bond bank.
Yeah. And just so you're clear, they, they're okay with you, the first payment on that lease, whatever arrangement the council and commissioners accept from the quotes they receive for your, your review, they wouldn't expect payment until you have the product delivered. Right? Okay. That'd be key to make sure they don't expect it before then. And I, based on that, that fund's financial status, you may not want it to start until first part of twenty-four.
So we, we basically need to authorize, uh, the Director of Emergency Medical Services to move forward with the inquiry into the Indiana Bond Bank, uh, on, on the financing opportunities.
And I might just add to that, Mark, too. If, because these are going to be more expensive than what you've been paying for in the past, I think. That being the case, you gotta decide, will that fund have enough money available to make the payments that you've been doing in the past? Or is the general fund going to be kicking in as well? So there's that discussion to have. And possibly, I don't know for sure right now as you're talking, uh, you may have to consider or could consider if you want to, if you don't want the general fund to be involved, is raising the limit that CCD fund can generate in dollars, which you mean, uh, you gotta go through the process to have a, an increased levy capability, if that's possible.
What would that, would that detract from some other revenue stream?
Uh, doesn't affect the other funds other than anytime you increase a levy, you're subject to more tax cap losses unless the AV is increased to accommodate. subject to more tax cap losses unless the AV is increased to accommodate that. Because obviously, no matter, even though it doesn't affect the general fund, the Cume Bridge Fund and so forth, anytime you're generating more tax levy, unless you have AV to accommodate that, more losses come into play. So there's that.
Now, on the present, eighteen ambulances, which we have four of those, that lease payment, the last one, is due in December of this year.
Twenty-two?
Yeah, twenty-two.
So there, in twenty-three, that doesn't include any kind of like ambulances payments?
But it's budgeted for them, right?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay. Well, like I said, that may be the line you cut in twenty-three, I don't know, but if you keep that intact, something else has to be cut, I think. But if you have that in place in twenty-three's, then maybe you could have a payment late twenty-three if this come in, maybe.
So we're going to have to sit down and do some more number crunching after we find out what this, the bond bank can do for us. So again, it behooves us to authorize our EMS director to move forward with the inquiry. We can do, we probably should do that by motion since it's going to deal with money.
At what timeframe is this bid in place?
Thirty days.
Thirty days, that's.
And it will go up after thirty. Days went up every month for the last year and a half or so.
I'd want you gentlemen to feel comfortable making a motion to have the EMS director move forward with the inquiry with the bond bank.
Absolutely.
I'll second that. Right. We have a motion with support to authorize our EMS director to inquire on the bond bank and will get us back some information. Any questions before we vote? No.
This will be, maybe it's another topic, but it's related. So that motion does not affect or impact the bid you received. You're strictly saying we'll review the financing with the bond bank further. So nothing to do with the bid itself at this point.
No. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's carried.
We will, yes.
Just one thing. So, Duane, I'd like to get with you to kind of understand, like I say, I'm brand spanking new, and so I'd like to learn a little bit about why we need four ambulances.
Come out.
I know we've got Marion General locating a new location out in Gas City, and I'm trying to wrap my head around the needs of the community. And I know the faster we can respond to any type of accident or medical condition or anything like that, the chances of sustaining life is better. But I would like to kind of understand the, because we do have a lot of things happening around us with medical, especially with the Gas City area. And you guys be running from there, Garth Wade, is that correct?
Yes. Well, we run from, well, we run from Swayze, Upland, Van Buren, Washington Township, we're stationed.
So these ambulances will be located in those areas?
Fairmount, yes.
Okay, okay. I wouldn't have heard of that. I thought everything was being out there. Okay.
Now, unless you want to build us a huge, gigantic building.
I thought you already had one.
We don't want to go there. Go, go.
These ones already have a building.
But I would like to get with you a little bit to understand what we do.
Do I have to explain? Come on, yes.
Okay.
I guess my question, Commissioner, is what do you intend to do about the bid at this point? What's the?
As a comment next agenda?
Yeah, it will come back to us. It'll come back because after he looks at the bond bank with this bid, he may go, it's just not possible.
Right.
He has the opportunity to not recommend it to us.
I don't know.
I don't anticipate that, but he has that option.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any provision where you accept a bid pending financial plans.
Just take it under advisement?
At this point, yes, we only have thirty days before it goes up again, is what I'm saying. What date was that bid dated?
Today.
Okay, today.
We'll work on it.
Thank you, Duane.
Thank you very much. Thank you again. Justin, you don't need to keep.
Nope. All right. We have a internet request.
I'm sorry.
Robert Emery.
Emery.
Sorry. No, that's my fault. I was going Emery, and I saw you over there, Butch. I was just trying to figure out, sorry.
Didn't know even the Robert, huh?
I don't, Butch is Butch to me, that's all.
Good morning, gentlemen. One I'm hearing about is we've been utilizing our coordinator's cell phone as a hotspot for our office. It is becoming not state now. The office out there is a hotspot, but that is federal, which we're not allowed to get on. So I have checked with different companies for a hotspot, and since we are a business, it costs is prohibitive. So I was asking, I talked to you about a hotspot here in McCollum.
Oh, yeah, you talked to Chris, I think he?
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting to request and see, we are even availed to a mandatory fee, but for us to get our own, the cost of the equipment and everything is prohibitive for our budget.
The Grant County Soil and Water District, at one point in our history, we utilized the Drainage Works Secretary as kind of a joint secretary between both groups. We stopped that probably ten, twelve years ago.
Right.
Has it been, just been that long?
Yeah.
It seems like ten or twelve years.
I come on the board.
Okay. But we've worked together now, and we are at least annually supporting solid, or the Soil and Water District with ten thousand dollars a year. Most counties are with Soil and Water Districts doing what they can to support. This does not seem like an outlandish request for support, and especially under the county umbrella, we're talking, what, fifty bucks or less a month for a hotspot?
I think it's like thirty, forty.
Thirty dollars a month, three, forty?
Yeah.
Well, I researched and everything, it would be sixty-five a month for us, plus buying the equipment, which totals out to about ninety-eight dollars a month, which we can't afford.
Mm-hmm.
So if I need any request or an okay, we can proceed however we want.
What's our inventory like with those?
I mean, we just have the ones for ours. I mean, we don't have any, like, spares. I mean, so this would have to be one, it would have to have its own, it would be like a sub-account, kind of like what we do for the assessors and the veterans' office.
Do they need those full-time?
I mean, I'm under the impression they are. I know that Brad, he takes his home, so that way he can work from home and things like that. The assessor's office, I mean, as for them, I mean, because I think they, it's just whenever they go out to, you know, do inspections and stuff like that or assess people's homes. So I don't know how frequent that is. I don't think it's all the time, so that could be something, maybe. But I mean, it sounds like with you guys, that this would be something that would stay a hundred percent at your office.
And we're only there three days a week.
Gotcha.
Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so it'll only be utilized part of the week.
Okay. It's kind of funny, peculiar, funny, that the feds want you to work out of USDA and yet they won't allow you to have internet connection. That's amazing.
Yeah. Well, we pursue that, and they said, no. Even though our coordinator is bonded and cleared through the state, still.
You gentlemen have thoughts?
Not sure how, this would be a special appropriation as well from the council?
I'm not sure if, would we use that out of the commissioner's budget? I mean, technically, the commissioners are the ones who budget the money that we distribute to Soil and Water each year, so would we, do we have a line item for equipment like that, or will we prevail upon IT to bear that cost? And we're talking, I'm thinking three hundred and sixty dollars a year for us to do it versus their twelve hundred. Oh? Oh?
We can share some of the cost, but not all, which severely damaged our budget.
I don't see why it couldn't come out of the general fund. Because I believe the assessors pay for there, and veterans pay for there.
So at some point, we probably, it won't be discussed this month at the budget, but we would want to put that in as a line item for our budget since we dispersed the money to the.
Could, yeah.
I think that probably makes the most sense.
Or we could use contractual services.
Say, if you're going for three hundred and sixty dollars, I would make a separate line item.
Okay.
But you're talking something so insignificant in total scope of things, you include it in your waiver account you want to.
Okay.
If it's part of the commissioner's budget, if it's part of IT's budget, whatever, you encapsulate that into that.
And April's the one that does the payment of those anyway. Put it under contractual and be done with it.
I do not have a problem with the commissioners making that a part of our annual support to Soil and Water. I don't have a problem with that.
You need a motion?
We need a motion.
I should move.
Second.
Motion with support, Mr. Wright and Mr. Burton, respectively, to approve use of one of our hotspots for the Grant County Soil and Water District. And any further discussion on that?
Just I thought I'd make that comment. Obviously, to me, it feels good to have it just included in that line item total, as long as the council approves the line item total, which they would, I would think.
All right. All those in favor would say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's carried unanimously. We continue to work with the Soil and Water, more and more, don't we, Butch?
Yes, yes, and we appreciate it. Meetings a week from Thursday is open to the public outside the federal building. So anybody wants to come and see what we do and how we do, we're there. Thank you.
I don't want to get you too full, but any landowner in the county can come to those meetings, right?
That's exactly right.
That's right.
We're in Grant County, the whole county.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. All right, are we aware of any other new business? All right. We are at the point where we are ready for public comment. We happy to open up the floor for public comment first. Anything not to do with anyone first that has something to do other than solar.
I've got stuff with a lot of things, but I don't yield to anybody else.
Yeah, goes, anyone else prior to discussion on solar? Hearing none? We will open up the floor for the next fifteen minutes for others who would like to make statements on solar, and just need you to give your name, your address, and present your concerns or comments.
Thank you. Harold King, seven oh seven South Sim Street, Swayze. First of all, in the last eight, ten months, I've become more involved in local government than previous in my lifetime. First of all, there's a lot of groups and a lot of moving parts. Kudo to anyone that's willing to devote time for their citizens. One of the things I keep hearing lately is that there's a perception that Grant County is a place that does not welcome business. And I have trouble understanding that because we've had the ethanol plant, Denham's, Walmart, Woodmark, Redline, Grains and Grill, Payne's, Texas Road House. So we have a lot of businesses here. Also, the eighteen, State Road eighteen and sixty-nine corridor, I think is a gold mine and that's going to get developed. I like to recognize, I've been in Grant County since, what, nineteen seventy-nine? And during my time, the mayors at Gas City has worked twenty-four-seven selling their community and Grant County. So we've had many businesses locate here. Being against a large solar installation, I don't think changes Grant County to a place that's not welcoming to business. Adams County in Fort Wayne has one of the most citizen-friendly solar ordinance in the state, and no one is talking about the fact that they don't welcome businesses. If you are looking, well, the governing bodies, you know, money is important to make the world go round, but if you're looking at solar to solve all your financial issues for the last twenty-five years, I wish you luck. Quality of life in Grant County, you're talking about the trails, the walkway, those are things that are to be celebrated. I don't see how large solar farms helps the quality of life for Grant County. It doesn't improve the quality of life. My concern is jobs. I know you have to have workers and all that, but people that bring jobs and people to this area generate money, taxes, then you have money to spend and help that quality of life. So I appreciate your time to talk. Thank you for all of you that do serve. You've got a lot on your plate, so thank you.
Thank you. Just a point of order, so that we've got about ten, twelve minutes left. We will not be doing anything action-wise until after we hear back from the area plan. I believe they have a meeting tonight as well as the fifteenth. And so we will, we will receive information, but we won't be answering any questions regarding what may or may not come out of the area plan. So anyone else want to step up, reserve your name, address, and concerns or comments?
I'm Julie Hartman, twenty-six forty east, ten fifty south, Fairmount. And concerning this, this solar covering our farmland, I was just looking through our Indiana code because I was really concerned about what can happen to our county. And concerning like decisions being made on something like this, the other thing that I found in thirty-six seven four six oh three, under zoning ordinance and amendments and preparation and consideration of proposals like this, that the planned commission and legislative body, there are five things to take into consideration, and I'm just pleading with you to please take this into consideration. And one is the comprehensive plan, which supports preserving our farmland and not encroachment upon residents that would devalue our residences and our property values. Every, the solar companies have said that it doesn't, you know, it doesn't devalue. I have looked at four or five of their studies, and they did not pass the appraisers, what you go through, they didn't, it wasn't correct, and it wasn't, you know, it was, we had false information in it. And if you have any others, I can send those to you. If you have any others, I'd be glad to study, you know, go through that study with those also. The second thing is, in the Indiana code, is to take into consideration the current conditions and character of the uses that we have in our district and the importance of this farming is the use that we have in our district. The third thing is the most desirable. The third thing is the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, and we are adapted for agriculture. And the fourth thing is the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction. And the fifth thing is responsible development and growth. And I have seen a lot of things that have been, um, irresponsible, um, from these solar companies. And, um, even, even solar itself, among all the green energy, it is the least reliable, and it takes up our farmland. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, Mark, my understanding is.
For, for the record, Kenny, Kenny Cates, Swayze.
My understanding is that when you pass the group four to the Perry Planting, they'll have a meeting, and then what they come back to you with is the final deal, and you just sign off on it.
Right. I don't have my attorney here to, to give me straight information right now, but as I understand it, if APC does not act, it is adopted by default. If there is some type, and, and I will have to get clarification from the attorney about this, if there is some type of rejection with recommendations, we have to look at that. That is what I anticipated. Is that fair?
That's, that's pretty much the way I understand it as well. In other words, if, if, uh, I know there was a question, you know, concerning.
You guys won't be able to change it when it comes back to you a little, right?
My understanding, yes, we can. That's my understanding.
And, uh, again, if for some reason APC does not take action, does not take action, and it automatically becomes ordinance, we can always, at the appropriate time, review any ordinance in, in Grant County that we are in charge of. So we always have the purview to come back, refine, or edit, or, or amend, uh, at a later date.
Thank you.
Got about five minutes left. Anybody else?
Uh, maybe you, uh, people have already heard this, but the ordinance that the APC passed had all the protections for these five things. But the ordinance that they have, and will be looking at, um, again, that was sent back to them, does not have, um, any of these protections of these five things. So I'm just pleading that we would have the protections.
Some of those protections will be developed within the economic development because of each unique situation, with every farm being a different, because of topographical, its neighbors, those types of things, so. That, that will be reviewed, but just not in the form that we, we sent, sent it to the APC. Right, anyone else? All right. We are planning for our next regular session on August the fifteenth, ten a.m. And I, I don't think it's the intention of APC to send anything to us today, or, or tonight. I think they're meeting on the fifteenth, it will wrestle with the solar, uh, for the most part there, so we may not hear from them on that issue until the first meeting in September. But, uh, we will be waiting and see how things progress from there, and, and Mr. Wright is our, our representative on the APC, so. Best wishes on deliberations here in the next couple of weeks. All right. All right, hearing none other, we will declare ourselves in recess. Thank you.